Are you ready to get going? I got the thumbs up, so here we go. So I will call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council for July 7th, 2020 to order pursuant to Section 3 of the Executive Order N-29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. There is a phone number you can call, 646-749-3122, or get our access code through the city's live webcast. Okay, again, before the meeting begins, I want to remind those who are calling in that your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the items you wish to provide comment upon. So if I could ask our city clerk to provide roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
I'm here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here.
Okay, so we will begin with our invocation. I found a prayer that's entitled Prayer for a Time of Pandemic, and I thought it was appropriate with the surge that we've been seeing in our COVID cases, unfortunately. And so I will recite the following. May we who are merely inconvenienced remember those whose lives are at stake. May we who have no risk factors remember those most vulnerable. May we who have the luxury of working from home remember those who must choose between preserving their health or making their rent. May we who have the flexibility to care for our children when their schools close remember those who have no options. And may we who have to cancel our trips remember those that have no safe place to go. May we who are losing our margin money in the tumult of the economic market remember those who have no margin at all. As fear grips our country, let us choose love during this time, and we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other. Let us yet find ways to be the loving embrace of God to our neighbors. Amen. Okay, and if we will all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we will recite that together. And there's our flag put up by our great city clerk. So, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance
allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic of which stands one name under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. That reminds me of, in a normal time, I would have been reciting this Pledge of Allegiance numerous times in the last few days because we would have been holding our baseball tournaments over at Live Oak Park. We would follow that with the Little League pledge and how we take for granted some of the simple things in life, I guess. But there is no Little League baseball right now, so unfortunately, we won't be doing that. Okay, so we will now start with our ceremonial matters. We have a presentation this evening. This is our Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Mr. City Manager, did we have, did Adam want to say a few words on this before I recite the proclamation, or do you want me to go?
Please.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Yes, every July each year, we get to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. Obviously, this year, it'll look a little bit differently with our COVID-19 situation. We have our modified traditional programs for this year. We will be starting our virtual concert series, actually tomorrow evening. We'll be having a four-concert series this year premiering on our city's social media sites. We will still be conducting our summer camp, which starts next week, again as a virtual program, as well as Campapalooza later this month. One of our modified onsite programs, which hopefully will be able to still continue, given the support from LA County, is a drive-in movie theater series. So we're looking to host that actually at Live Oak Park in August. But those are some of those programs that we have coming up during the summer, which is our way in Temple City of still celebrating Parks and Recreation Month.
Great. Are there any questions from council? Fantastic. Well, I appreciate all that you and your staff are doing. I know that you're doing your best to keep a lot of these programs going one way or another. Look forward to the concert series starting tomorrow night. Just a quick question. So that'll be available online at 7:30, or I forget what time?
Yes, that's correct. So it'll be premiering at 7 o'clock PM, and that's on the city's YouTube page, Facebook, as well as Instagram. So if folks at home just want to head over to the city's website, www tempecity.us, if you go to the recreation page, you can actually find the links there as well to click on and watch from the comfort and safety of your home.
Great, and that'll be, well, that'll be available, like, let's say someone can't watch it tomorrow night, they can always download it and look at it Thursday or Friday or something like that. Is that going to be available?
Yes, that's correct. So you won't be able to view it until starting at 7 o'clock tomorrow evening. After it's been premiered, then you can go back and watch it at any time.
Great, thank you.
I have, Tom, I have a stupid question.
Go ahead, we like stupid questions.
All right. Does that mean they're actually going to play tomorrow night, or they've already done that?
So, Councilmember Viscara, we've actually been doing a pre-filming of the concerts. We've been doing that onsite at Temple City Park, so our residents have that feeling of being in Temple City Park, but they're all pre-recorded ahead of time, so it will not be, yes, it won't be live.
Thank you.
So apparently, you don't get out much, because if you had driven by Temple City Park, you would have seen the big old green fence surrounding the pavilion, and you would have thought, what the heck is that doing?
I saw that, but I didn't go nearby.
Yeah?
I lived two blocks away.
Yeah, that's right, I know you do, so, all right. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and state the declaration, just like we, our designation or the proclamation, like we normally do. Just, Adam, pretend that we're standing next to each other, and I'm handing you a piece of paper, so we'll do it virtually, okay?
We'll do it.
So this is, as Adam said, this is designated, July is designated as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Temple City, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, recreate outdoors, excuse me, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Temple City recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore, I, Tom Chavez, Mayor of the City of Temple City, California, hereby proclaim July 2020 as Park and Recreation Month in the City of Temple City. So, again, Adam, thank you, and please thank all your staff for all the work you've done, and keep doing a good job, and we look forward to seeing a lot of those future programs. I'm interested to see especially the Campapalooza, how that's going to happen, but I remember four years ago, when the last time I was mayor, five years ago, and I think there were a lot of people out there, our city clerk, our city manager, Brian Hayworth, we were all out there camping, and it was quite an adventure. And so I look forward to seeing how we're going to be doing that this year. Of course, we're not going to be there live, but I'm sure you have something good for us in store, so, so thank you. All right, so we will now move on to Item 6, Public Comments on Items Not Listed on the Agenda. City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of the agenda. This section is limited to 30 minutes total. So I will begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
Yes, Mayor, I have a statement from the library manager, if I may read it.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez and City Council. I'm very happy to announce that, starting July 6th, Temple City Library is offering sidewalk services. Customers can order library materials online and have them delivered to Temple City Library. Once they receive notifications that their items are available, they can call the library and the staff will have their items ready. Holds may be picked up from our hold part on the sidewalk Monday through Friday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. For more information about the sidewalk service, including currently open locations, please visit the county's library's website, https la countylibrary.org. While the library is closed to the public, staff are available to answer questions by phone, 9 to 6, Monday to Friday. Their phone number is 626-235-2136. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you, Ching Lee, for that information. That's good news. Okay, for those who are calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. Do we have any callers on the line?
Mayor, we have two callers.
Okay. Do either of you would like to say anything at this time? Okay, hearing no response, I will close public comments. Okay, we will now move on to Item Number 7, our Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons out in our virtual audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. So, do we have any, I'll ask our city clerk, do we have any email requests to speak on the consent calendar?
No, Mayor, not for the consent calendar items.
Okay, okay. I would, before we entertain a motion, I would like to pull Item Number E, the City-Based Homeless Plan. I know that Jaclyn Grant is here, and she's made a kind effort to at least attend, so I think it would be nice to perhaps let her speak on that, or anything that she would like to add to the report that we already have. So is there any other matters that council would like pulled from the consent calendar? If not, why don't we take a motion on the items other than Item E?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar except for Item E.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any objection? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call on that, please?
Yes, Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, so I, this will item E, City-Based Homeless Plan. I know Ms. Grant is here with us tonight. Did you want to add anything this evening to the report, or anything that you would like to highlight that's on the report for council? Don't forget to unmute your microphone. There you go. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It's an honor to be here and part of the meeting this evening. Beyond what's included in the report, I think what I would mention is just that on behalf of our firm-focused strategies, that we're really looking forward to working with yourselves and with members of your community to develop this city plan. The process itself, as is outlined in the staff report, is intended to be really inclusive in terms of involving input and coordination from members of different departments within the city, as well as opportunities for feedback from various members of the community and stakeholders. And so we're looking forward to developing this process, which is scheduled to be completed by the end of this calendar year.
Great, thank you very much. Any council members have any questions for Ms. Grant? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much for attending this evening, providing that information to us. So at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding Item E of the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Thank you.
We approve it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes. Yes. Happened with Peggy's.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, okay, thank you. That matter has been approved. Thank you, thank you again, Ms. Grant. I appreciate you coming this evening. And we'll now move on to Item Number 8, our public hearing. Thank you. Our public hearing is the, Item A is going to be a continuation of the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 20-1043, amending Title IX. This is regarding the accessory dwelling units, I believe. However, Mr. City Manager, this matter is going, or you are requesting that this matter be continued, is that correct? And Mr. Murphy, maybe you may want to lead me a little bit on, do we need to open up the public hearing first and then continue the matter to another date?
Mayor Chavez? Yes, Mayor, I think it would be wise to ask if anyone is on the line to offer comment tonight. If they are, then open the public hearing. If not, then the item can simply be continued. It's going to be continued to a date uncertain. As the city manager will explain, there will be some revisions to the ordinance based on input from Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development. And so comments tonight may actually wind up not being relevant to what ultimately comes back, but if anyone is on the phone to speak, they should have a chance, so.
Okay.
Please ask, and we can go further.
Mr. City Manager, anything to add to that?
No, Mayor Chavez.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we did receive one at 7:26, just before the meeting started. May I read it?
Sure, please.
Good evening, Honorable City Council. Revisions must be made to the city's ADU and junior ADU ordinance, especially the location requirement, which requires the ADUs, JADUs be located in the rear 50% of the lot. There are many easement properties in Temple City, and most of them have the garage in the front, parallel to the front street. This requirement becomes the biggest obstacle for easement property owners to convert the existing garage to ADU or junior ADU. Also, most of the neighboring neighbor cities, such as Arcadia, Alhambra, Covina, et cetera, have this requirement. They strongly urge the city council and planning department to remove this ADU and JADU location requirement. Thank you, best regards, John Wenhan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other email requests to speak?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and I'll ask you to unmute the microphones. If there's anyone online, anyone who's listening, now is your time to speak. Do we have any comments on the phone?
There are two callers.
Okay. Either of those callers, would you like to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, hearing none, then I will close the public hearing. And I believe, do we need a motion to continue this?
Yes, actually, the executive order that allows for these kinds of video meetings requires everything to be done by motion and roll call vote. So yes, sir, thank you.
Not a problem. All right, so can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Before you continue, I have an inquiry from a constituent. Would it be appropriate for me to bring it up at this point?
Well, certainly, you're free as a council member to make any comments or any questions, so go ahead.
Well, there is a concern with some of the folks that want to convert the garages and also have a playroom on the premises. They don't want to have to give up the playroom in order to do a conversion, and I don't know how that's addressed in this.
Well, I'm assuming that that will be something that our community development director will take into account, as well as our associate planners, and when that comes back to us, that would probably be the proper time to bring those things up. And before we make any kind of determination of what we're going to do tonight, we're simply being asked to continue this so that allows staff to take into account some new language and some new designs that, I guess, rather than having to do something and have it, for want of a better term, go back and decide that we weren't allowed to do that or can't do that. So I think out of the abundance of caution, we're giving, basically, all we're doing right now is continue the discussion on this matter so we have more information.
Sounds like if this was a good time to get it out there, then.
Yep, okay, so unless there are any further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to continue this item. Do we have a motion?
Continue the item.
Okay, and that'll be to a date uncertain at this time, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mayor Protem Yu. Okay, could we get a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, and that will be that item. So now we will move on to Item Number 9, Unfinished Business. There is none, and now we get to move on to our new business of the evening, Item Number 10. Item A is calls for the adoption of Urgency Ordinance 20-1044-U, providing for an additional one-year extension for planning entitlements. So, Mr. City Manager, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Before you tonight is, as mentioned prior by Mayor Protem Yu and others on the council, and also included in the Economic Recovery Plan was the step to assist in the development of the City COVID-19 event, which would allow for the community development director to work with individual applicants who wish to have an extension on their entitlements through specific periods of time, depending on when those entitlements were granted. So very briefly, Mr. Reamer will go through kind of what that process would look like and what that allows for, for those who do have entitlements for development in the city.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Reamer, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Before you tonight is an item in response to the overwhelming COVID-19 pandemic that's created a lot of uncertainty. We've seen applicants expressing concern, asking questions about how their entitlements might be affected by this level of uncertainty. Right now, so just to take a step back really quick, a planning entitlement gives someone a right to build a project or open a business. A planning entitlement can be approved by staff, it could be approved by the director or planning commissioner, city council. They're good for two years originally, and then, under the existing code, they can already apply for a one-year extension. So right now, we might have a scenario where someone originally gets an approval for a project next month. Under that scheme, they would have until August of 2023 to build out the project, including that one-year extension that's already in the code. But really, where we thought we needed to focus was on projects that were approved years ago, and due to this economic uncertainty, now they needed to have some additional time. So, for instance, you could have a project that was approved back in August of 2017, and they would be running out of their entitlement next month, and they'd be facing this whole uncertainty about building a project under these new terms. And so this is what this urgency ordinance is in response to. So, under the ordinance, a project that had an approval, for instance, back in August of 2017, that application would have expired in August of 2019, then we would have given them another one-year extension to August 2020, that's next month. And then, under this law, this ordinance, they would be allowed to extend that one more year to August of 2021. So this ordinance would give the director or the city managers, any other designee, the ability to approve this additional one-year extension that's already allowed for in the code. This would require the applicant to fill out an application. There's some benefit to that, that we feel that it's good not to just give a blanket approval, but to have them come in and submit an application so that we can update information on who the owner is. We did want to let you know that we will report back to you on how well this ordinance has been used, and then if we feel that there's some additional need to extend this ordinance for another year. We will be also reaching out to those applicants who are entitlements are expiring and letting them know that there is the potential that their projects may expire, and letting them know that there is some relief from that expiration. So with that, we're providing you an ordinance that would provide an additional one-year extension beyond that's already in the code. With that, I have, I'm available if you have any other questions.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. We'll start with Councilmember Mann. Do you have any questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, I don't have any questions either. Thank you for that thorough report. We will now open up public comment. I will begin by asking our city clerk if we have any public comment emails on this matter.
No, there are no public comment emails, Mayor.
Okay, and for those callers who are on the line, does anyone wish to comment on this matter at this time?
We have two callers.
None at this time.
Okay, no. All right, thank you. No comments at this time, so I will close public comment, and I will take any final council questions or comments. Councilmember Mann?
I just want to thank staff for the report. Considering the unusual circumstances, I think it's a good idea. That's all.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I agree with Councilmember Mann.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Thank you to Ms. Mayor. I just want to thank the city manager and Mr. Reamer for taking proactively and trying to take care of our community, construction community during this pandemic. So I thank them for that.
Okay, thank you. I would echo my colleagues. It appears to be a very equitable type of action that we have been trying to set the standard for in the city and making sure that everyone is treated equally and take into account all these difficult things that we have to go through these days. So thank you very much for doing that. And so at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Chavez, a move that we introduced for first reading only, about head only and way for the reading of Ordinance 20-1044-U, providing for an additional one-year extension of entitlements provided for in Section 9-1. providing for an additional one-year extension of entitlements provided for in section 9 dash 1C dash 5, six of the zoning code.
Hey, thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem U. If there is no objection, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, I will ask our city clerk to please read the ordinance title.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, excuse me, I lost the title. Please. Number 21044U, an urgency ordinance at the city council of the city of Temple City, California, authorizing a temporary procedure for granting your extension planning entitlements set to on or before March 4th, 2020.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to item B, consideration to recommence the enforcement of street sweeping and overnight parking restrictions. So I will ask our city manager to introduce this item to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. The last time we were together, this is minus our newly installed Councilmember Viscara, we had a meeting related to, as COVID-19, and right shortly before the safer at home order was issued. At that time, the council provided some direction to me, not formally in a motion, but through general comments and direction to suspend, suspend enforcement of street sweeping and overnight parking restrictions. We have been doing that since that time, hence why no parking citation revenue has been coming in. The one thing to note about street sweeping, it is even though we like clean streets in the city, one issue related to street sweeping enforcement is that as part of the stormwater compliance measures, the city enacted additional street sweeping efforts in order to be in, be in compliance with the MS4 permit, the existing MS4 permit related to that. So that is something we will have to address at some point or another in terms of what we have to do from an enforcement standpoint. Overnight parking is a little bit more flexible per se in the sense that that is a, a policy decision, both are policy decisions on your part. But one has a more of the regulatory standpoint of it from the street sweeping component, and the other one, a little bit, for lack of a better term, a little more flexible on the overnight parking issue. So we would suggest that if you decide either one, if you want to do overnight versus street sweeping or street sweeping versus overnight, we would stage that. And for the first several weeks before we would get enforcement of either, either restriction that we would provide warnings for several weeks to those who, for the, for the, for the residents so they know before citations where it would be issued. So that's it for the report. If I'm here for any questions, and I think Mr. Azumi is here as well somewhere.
Very, thank you. Okay, we'll begin with council questions. I'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem U this time.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have any questions, but just want to make a comment. I think that we instituted it because the COVID night to ease the stress and also to address folks that might have students or other relatives that might stay with them during this COVID-19 pandemic. However, I do remember that, I don't remember that we actually set aside the street sweeping. So, and I, I think that this clarification from the city manager is timely so that we all know what we're, where we're going.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions for staff?
Brian, I'm not sure I understand the, the relation between street sweeping and stormwater.
No problem, Councilmember Viscara. So as part of the MS4 permit, because of the costliness of having to either put filters or things, grates in storm drains, one of the measures you could take was to do additional street sweeping to ensure that, in particular, the trash, what's called TMDL, daily, total daily maximum load, what's going in the gutter, essentially. And then what the state is measuring of what's going into the gutter and into the ocean is minimized. And the street sweeping, that was before I got here, but that was very common for many cities to do, would be to do additional street sweeping efforts in order to clean up the trash to make sure that it doesn't get into the storm drain.
Mr. City Manager, if I may add to that?
Sure, go ahead, Brian. Mr. Azumi?
As part of that, uh, street sweeping, prior to 2014, we did not have any parking restrictions, which did not allow efficient sweeping of the street. However, since 2014, with restricted parking on street sweeping days, the street sweeper is able to effectively sweep the entire curb without having to go around vehicles that are parked blocking a portion of the curb.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Azumi. And hence, also in an effort to be in compliance or do what we can to, as a measure, to ensure the trash, TMDLs do not get into the stormwater system. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, kind of. We're not talking about discontinuing street sweeping, though, are we? I know it's an inconvenience to have the cars parked in some places overnight. But we're not really talking about discontinuing street sweeping.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We continue to do it, right?
We, I'm sorry, sir, what you're saying, to discontinue street sweeping? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that completely.
Are, are we discussing discontinuing street sweeping? Because we haven't so far.
No, no, sir. No, just the, just the issue of parking related to the hour and the enforcement hours of street sweeping for park, for cars that would need to not park in certain areas where street sweeping was occurring.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions at this time?
I don't have any questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Just one, one quick question. Is there a reason for bringing the street sweeping and the overnight parking across the base in the staff report?
I didn't hear the question. It kind of broke up. Can you repeat the question again?
Oh, yes, sure. Is there a reason that we're, the staff report is proposing that the two be continued in a month apart from each other?
Not, not particularly. We just thought that that's what potentially the council would want to do. But it was, it, 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 it is at the council's discretion on how they would want to, how you as a council would want to schedule that.
I imagine, if I may add to that, part of the reason for the staggered implementation is street sweeping does not require any other activities other than issuing the warning sites. However, we have during the whole safer at home suspended the issuance of parking permits. And so the staggered schedule will give a month and a half or so for residents to start submitting their applications to purchase those annual permits at the third quarter rate, which would be prorated for the third quarter of July, August, and September.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
A couple of questions. Okay, just to follow up on the, on the rates. Okay, so these, the overnight parking, those are, that's from January to December, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then a couple of the concerns I've heard is that there are cars that have just simply been parked and not moved at all. And then has, has, Brian, Mr. Azumi, have you or your, or your have run into that situation? Have you identified that maybe there are cars that are just accumulating cobwebs underneath them?
We've seen a few vehicles, nothing that was major. That did look like they were parked there for a while without being moved, as evidenced by debris and cobwebs and everything underneath the vehicle. During the whole lockdown, we've also received some complaints from residents complaining about cars being parked on the street. However, we haven't towed any vehicles because of the 72-hour restriction, which would be an action that would be taken for a vehicle that hasn't moved.
Okay, so there's a separate ordinance then, other than the two we're talking about tonight, that deals with vehicles that are parked in a one location for more than 72 hours?
Correct. That's the, there's a state law in the vehicle code that says a vehicle cannot be parked consecutively in the same spot for 72 more hours or it's considered to be legally abandoned.
Okay, but we didn't, we didn't waive that. That, if I remember correctly, we were very specific that the only thing we were waiving was the overnight parking and the street sweeping, but that all other parking violations would remain in effect. So aren't we free to, to enforce that?
Yes, we are. And we, what we do is if we either observe a vehicle that appears to be abandoned or receive a complaint, we would issue or put on the vehicle, and we refer to it as a red tag. And with that red tag, we would put it on the vehicle, chalk around the tires. And if the vehicles parked consecutively in the same location for 72 hours or more, we would have that vehicle towed. In our case, we were called out to vehicles throughout the city, throughout the safer at home order. And we red-tagged it. However, when we returned, the vehicle is no longer in the same location.
Well, which means they're not in violation.
Correct.
All right. So the concern would be, okay, so that, that concern that people are saying that cars are being parked there for months, the city may still address those issues, correct, under the current?
Correct. That'll be, that'll be addressed separately as its own violation. However, street sweeping also does address that, the vehicles do have to be moved for.
I understand. Okay. Okay, as far as the street sweeping and the pollution, are we currently out of compliance right now? Or is that something that's perhaps to be determined down the road? And, and who is going to be enforcing that? And I can't believe that any state agency would not at least, well, maybe I can believe it, that a state agency would enforce something like that, given the circumstances of what's going on. Have we heard anything on that?
I think Mr. Murphy has mentioned to you in prior meetings about some lawsuits related to the MS4 permit. But the current MS4 permit is currently in place. Our compliance is required. There has been no fines issued to Temple City or no warnings issued to Temple City at this time. But Mr. Murphy, you said anything?
Would there be, would there be a warning then first then? Is that, is that?
No, generally there is not. If there is a violation, the state, the agency will fine. There, there generally is not warnings.
Mr. Murphy, have you heard any, anything down the road that says that they're going to start enforcing those things? Or we're in, we're in danger of being violated?
Nothing that says that they enforce, but nothing that says that they will not. In the context of the pending lawsuits that we've discussed before, the only thing that they're holding off on issuing fines for are the large infrastructure projects that were required under the MS4 permit. Other than that, the standard day-to-day type activity, they have said they want to keep going. So I cannot tell you that there is no risk. I can't say that the risk is huge during this pandemic time, but we just don't know.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, so I will now open up public comment. I will ask our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter.
Mayor Chavez, there are no emails.
Thank you. And those who are, those members of the public who are listening in, would anybody like to comment at this time on this matter? Hearing no comment, I will close public comments. And I will return to our council members for final comments and/or questions. I will start with Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. So I guess to sum up my thoughts about this, the main thing driving my decision or, or where, where I stand on this issue is the fact that the, there's been recent spikes of the 19 cases throughout LA County. And going back to our original reason for suspending both of these citations for being in overnight parking was to help families get through this difficult time. And at the time when we first lifted this, we thought that by now, July, we'd be over it. And clearly, we've learned a lot throughout the months, and we're still trying to get over that. So I don't see a strong desire to resume those.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Sternquist?
You know, I don't know when the right time is to resume the street sweeping. I know I've received a few emails, just a handful, asking that the council consider not doing that. And I, I was just thinking right now, when I was listening to Councilmember Mann, maybe we just make a determination that we resume street sweeping when we open up City Hall back to at least 70% or 75% capacity. Because I think we're just either going to continually having, having to come back to revisit, when is the right time? But I think our city manager has done, you know, an excellent job of doing the phasing in for opening that City Hall. So maybe that might be a possibility, just to say that when City Hall resumes, then the street parking can resume also. Just my thought.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
No, I, I had some of the same thoughts that, that Councilmember Mann had, and I agree with that. And further, I remember from my past life at the cog, that a lot of the concern was with street sweeping and other, and related activities with stormwater. And that's, that's a non-issue hopefully for the next five or six. I, I see no reason to change until it looks like we're going to open up.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem U?
Can you hear him? Can you hear you, Vince? No.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Yeah, you can hear me now? No?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, we, we lost connection. I think there are two separate matters. One is overnight parking, which would address folks that may have more of a tendency to stay at home during this pandemic, kids coming home and so forth. The other one, which I honestly don't remember, we have set aside with the street, uh, street sweeping. I think that the enforcement of street sweeping is important, not only because it is, uh, it has to do with stormwater, MS4 permit. And honestly, we don't expect a lot of rain during this time. But I think it has to do with the overall readiness of the city, the overall safety and welfare of our, of our community. Because I, I don't think the two can be stacked on top of each other. I mean, we have cars that sit there. I mean, like you said, cobwebs and trash collected underneath because we couldn't sweep them. I don't think it helps the community during the, the, the time of COVID-19. It is not that big of a deal when somebody moves it across the street once or twice a week. So I am of the opinion we should not, we should continue not enforcing the overnight parking, but we should have continued with the street sweeping citation. If you're supposed to cite people, they're not going to move their cars. And the city is going to look worse and worse.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I think I share some of the same concerns that my colleagues have already mentioned. I agree that, uh, you know, with the surge in cases, we see people who are going back to work now not going back to work. And we hear reports that seem to change every day about whether students are gonna be going back to school. Some are going to, USC was gonna have students go back, now they've decided, no, they're not going to. So I think there's still going to be a lot of people still at home. And those same concerns that we had back then are still present today. And for how much longer is anybody's guess? So, my, my thought about the overnight parking is I really don't see a compelling reason to return to, uh. Citing people for overnight parking at this time, maybe with this can be brought up later. Uh, plus, I think to then go back and ask people to, um, pay, you know, three months' worth or whatever it may be. You know, we haven't, we've already passed our budget, we've, we've taken this into consideration. And so, um, I don't again see any compelling reason to do that. Although I'm not as much convinced on the street sweeping. Although, to be honest with you, I don't really think the street sweepers do that great of a job to begin with. Now, that's just my feeling, I think they more or less spread the stuff around, rather than just pick it up. Or at least on, depends, I guess, on what they're actually sweeping up. But, uh, but you know, my concern is that, of course, we do have certain, um. Uh, guidelines we must meet, uh, you know, we have to think about the environment. And I kind of tend to agree with Mayor Protem you that it's not that much of an inconvenience, I don't think, for people. To move their cars, uh, once a week. And, you know, we got them used to it, and then all of a sudden, you know, we, we, we got them not used to it. Although they're, I'll, I'll have to tell you, I believe that many of my neighbors aren't really aware of the. The, the street sweeping relaxation, because they still move their cars to the opposite side of the street. When they expect the street sweeper to come. And so, you know, it's, uh, so I don't know how many people actually realize that we don't do, we aren't doing that. So, I, I would kind of not be against, um, starting the, 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 the parking restrictions for our street sweeping. Leave the overnight parking just as it is for now, we can always address those issues later. Uh, my only question is giving them basically, uh, less than, less than thirty days to, to, uh. To acclimate themselves, I don't know if that's enough. Uh, maybe, maybe we start giving out warnings between now and then, rather than begin, start citing August first, which is, you know. What, three weeks away maybe? Maybe start citing, citing September first or something like that. Give them a little more time, especially give staff a little bit more time to, uh, to put these warnings. But also, I would like, just, and I think, uh, Mr. Arizumi has heard, uh, our discussion tonight. And, and I would like to see, however, staff really, um, looking out for cars. That are taking advantage of the situation, we don't want cars just parked there for, for weeks at a time. I don't think that's fair, uh, to the city or to the neighbors. Um, you know, that kind of, um, kind of defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to do here, so. Anyway, those are my thoughts, um, anyone else, uh, any further comments before we entertain a motion?
Uh, Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I think, um, the points you and Mayor Protem you made about street sweeping, uh, sounds pretty fair, so. Thank you for bringing.
Alright, no, okay, so I will go ahead and entertain a motion at this time regarding.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I have an email request to speak regarding street.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I have a request from Ms.
I'll reopen, just for Mr. Murphy, I will reopen the public comment. I, I don't know if I have the power to do that, but I'll try it anyway, so go ahead.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, if you're speaking, we're, we're, our city clerk is going to read an email to the council.
Sorry, it's a request from Ms. Miller to speak.
Okay, oh, okay, so it's a request to speak on this matter. Not an email.
It's from Ms. Peggy Miller.
Okay, alright, Ms. Miller, are you on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment to allow you to go ahead and speak on this matter, so go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as far as the sweet, the street sweeper, I haven't noticed a lot of dirt or accumulation of. Messiness on the ground, however, I did note that the governor did state that. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know if it was the governor, but I noted that there is a lot of germs on the ground. They're finding COVID on the actual bottom of shoes. So, as far as the street sweeper, when I've noticed that when he does, or when they do do the street, that all it does is. Just clear up all the filth on the ground, and now that we're hearing that it's actually COVID is airborne. It's not just, um, something that you can get if you're less than six feet away from a person. But it's actually in the air, and they found that to be true today, and it was in the, in the news. So, I think if anything, it would be safer to not have the street, street sweeper at this time. Because it's gonna floor up a lot of germs on the ground and make it more susceptible to us, in us and our community. For us to breathe in those germs. Um, even when I'm riding my bike, I don't go by the gardeners who are blowing the stuff all over the place. Because I know that, that's just gonna end up in, up my nostrils, so. Um, I would appreciate that consideration, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Alright, you're very welcome, alright, and we'll go ahead and close public comments, um, are we ready for a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to. Now I, we forgot what I was gonna say, I'll make a motion to, I don't have it right in front of me, it went to another screen, to, um. Keep the, just not suspend the, um, overnight parking. But to proceed with enforcement of a street.
Okay.
Give a time for that.
I think it would be best if, uh, so your motion, let me understand, your motion is to, uh, to, uh, keep the parking. Uh, restriction, or to, to, uh, keep the, um. Hold on, let me back up a little bit, so your motion would be to, um. To allow the overnight parking, uh, without citations for the time being. And however, to impose the street sweeping restrictions. Uh, I think we need a date though, beginning when?
I would say, um, we're July, August, September first.
Okay, so that will begin September first, I believe that staff would like the opportunity, however. To, uh, give out, uh, warning citations between now and September first, so, you know, will that be part of your motion?
Yes, because that would be about a little before the five, right?
Okay, correct, about approximately.
I think that's plenty.
Okay, okay, uh, Mr. Murphy, is that clear enough?
Clear enough, no change to the lack of, of enforcement of overnight parking. Street sweeping, uh, enforcement will begin on September one. Between now and September one, staff is to give warning notices that enforcement will begin September one.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mayor Protem, second, any objection? Hearing none, can we get a roll call vote please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem you?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, okay, good. Okay, yeah, we are now moving on, moving on to item number C. The, um, the big issue of the night, so, um, not that any of the others are big. Okay, now, um, as far as procedures go. Do we, I'm going to introduce item C, then I believe we have some representations before we actually get into the discussion. Is that correct, Mr. Murphy?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so item C tonight is a discussion of options for ordinance number twenty dash one oh four five U. Which was an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Temple City temporarily prohibiting evictions of residential and commercial tenants. arising out of financial impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. However, before we get to the presentation, I believe that Council, uh, Member Sternquist has, um, something that she would like to say. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I have to recuse myself from Ida, Ida Tennessee tonight. As many of you know, my husband and I own the real property located at fifty-nine fifty-six Simrose. That is a rental property that is a source of income for us. And I have a particularized interest in this moratorium, so I will recuse myself. Good night, have a great discussion, and, um, we will see each other again soon, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, good night, thank you. Okay, so we will now move on to our presentation, and I will turn that over to our city manager for comments.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council, uh, for the remaining council members who can participate in this, um, discussion. Uh, Mr. Murphy has crafted, um, a revised ordinance based on the input that we heard from the four council members. Prior, Mr. Murphy will go over that and, uh, provide you with some analysis and, uh, your options.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, um, you have the staff report and previous staff reports, I don't want to go too far into, to those details. Although I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, just as background, uh, when you, the city council, adopted the moratorium on March thirty-one. Uh, you stated clearly that your idea was to balance tenant and landlord rights and needs at that time in the context of the pandemic. Tenants were in immediate danger of being evicted. At the time, it was clear that landlords had more apparent avenues of getting funds if needed. So the initial moratorium was put in place, uh, with tenant protection in mind. But being for a reasonably short period of time, so that landlords would not have to bear too great a burden for too long a timeframe. Uh, the moratorium is tied to the length of the state and county health orders. Uh, which at the time were due to end March thirty-first, uh, the state order now ends late in this month of July. So what is before you tonight looks to return to the balance, uh, that you had originally sought. Uh, after your discussion, uh, in your first meeting in June, I went back, I did some research on what else is being done. Uh, in our area, what else is being done in other parts of the state, and I kept in mind your desire for balance. Uh, what I have proposed for you, uh, is that the moratorium end on September thirtieth, and then give six months for repayment. In this way, landlords would be made whole within a year of the ordinance first being adopted. Literally almost to the day, a year of the ordinance first being adopted. And obviously, if a tenant were not able to pay by then, then the landlord would be able to evict at that time. Uh, if the council wants to make changes to the time period, I'm, I'm not married to anything. Again, all of this is a way to attempt to effectuate what, what you've said that you want to do. Uh, I also modified the provisions of section seven, uh, to respond to input from landlord advocacy groups. A couple landlords who contacted staff and, uh, some landlord attorneys who have, who have contacted us. Uh, an issue that was brought up was that the language, uh, could be construed to be broad and cover evictions not based on COVID nineteen financial issues. Uh, now, I, I will tell you that the revised language does not go as far as some people would like. Uh, but again, it's designed to have a balance. Uh, we do, as we've said before, want to avoid unscrupulous landlords evicting tenants on a no cause or no fault eviction. Uh, where the tenants have shown an inability to pay due to COVID nineteen. Uh, at the same time, we don't want to cover landlords evicting for cause just because a tenant has COVID nineteen financial issues. Tenant should not be allowed to damage property and then not be evicted. Uh, this, again, goes back to the balance that you as a council want, uh, want to have. The decisions before you deny it are policy decisions, uh, what I have proposed to you is an attempt to, uh. Meet the policy that you wish to have, but I am more than willing to take any direction you would like to give me tonight. I can come back with further changes, we can change, uh, read changes into the record tonight for adoption. Um, we want, uh, to make your policy work for Temple City. Uh, just as one final matter, uh, the, the Los Angeles, or the California Daily Journal, which is the, uh, the legal newspaper. Uh, had an article a couple days ago about, uh, property owners fighting some of the eviction ordinances, uh, the moratorium. Um, I thought it'd be interesting, uh, just to bring up how far some of them go. Uh, now, the, the two main ones being challenged are San Francisco and Los Angeles, so you can imagine they're a little bit broader than what we have in place. San Francisco's actually would permanently ban any evictions and penalty fees for non-payment of rents due to the COVID nineteen, uh, crisis. So, any non-payment of rent during this time, uh, would basically have to be written off by a landlord. Uh, the rent, interest, penalty would all have to be written off, and things would start fresh, uh, once the COVID, uh, crisis ended. Um, the city of Los Angeles, uh, was also looking to prohibit rent increases. Uh, and, uh, take some broader eviction protections, um, that could even be unrelated to COVID nineteen financial issues. In, in both cases, challenges are, are beginning, uh, on those, uh, as you know, the courts are moving quite slowly these days. But, um, while we have no cases dealing with actual evictions, we, we do have lawsuits against eviction moratoria. So, um, those two, as I've said, go much farther than Temple Cities does. Um, but tonight is all about a policy decision for you, please don't treat anything I've written as, as something that has to be there, we can talk about it. Uh, but I'm here to take direction and to make, uh, what you want to do for Temple City work. So, uh, that's my presentation, I'm happy to answer questions or, or help you in any way I can.
Okay, thank you very much, alright, why don't we start with Mayor Protem you, uh, with any questions?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I have a question for the city attorney. Um, I thought last time we discussed that, um. Because apparently the county's moratorium could potentially run longer than ours. And I, I wasn't sure if I caught this correctly, what happened when ours ends and the county is still in place? And whether or not then we, the county, because we're part of the county, within the fall into the county's jurisdiction, or their moratorium?
That's a very good question, and I wish I could answer it for you. Uh, the counties, I, I will tell you what I know, and what I know is, uh, the matter is vague. The county's ordinance says that it applies in any incorporated city that does not have its own moratorium. Some people have interpreted that to say that if you have a moratorium at all, the terms of your moratorium will control. Other people have said, Mr. Mayor Protem, uh, what you alluded to, that once our moratorium expires, then the counties would take over. Uh, we don't know, uh, and frankly, as a legal matter, we can't know until somebody actually moves forward and brings a challenge. Um, I, I wish I could give you a more definitive answer, but I think both readings are fair. And I think eventually some judge dealing with a moratorium from a city like ours is going to have to make that decision.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, um, if our moratorium ends, then basically we have no moratorium? And wouldn't that then fall then under the LA County guidelines for cities that have no moratorium?
That's one reading, uh. That absolutely is one reading, one thing you could do.
You either have one or you don't have one, I would think, I mean, uh, there's no in-between.
Well, look at this, sir, um, we're, we're splitting fine legal points, but if your moratorium were to expire on the same day as the county of Los Angeles's moratorium, then the repayment period for each could be very different. But the moratoria would expire on the same day, so as a legal matter, theirs should not then provide any extra protections because the legal moratorium is over. The repayment period might go longer, but as a technical matter, it shouldn't apply. Uh, again, I don't know whether that would be the case or not.
Well, again, in that scenario, though, of course, we wouldn't have a moratorium, county wouldn't have a moratorium, so there is no moratorium anywhere to be seen, so. Somebody's got to keep one in, in place, whether it be us or, or the county, I would imagine, if we want, certainly we want to enforce something. All right, no, no, I don't mean to- Uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, is that it for your questions? All right, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Viscar, any questions of staff at this point?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm still wrestling with, uh, the just cause issue. And are we in any way prohibited?
Well, sir, what, what we've done, um, I, I cannot see that this, uh, moratorium would in any way, uh, prohibit a just cause eviction. I did work up some language that would more explicitly say so, but section five talks about, at, at its start, says that nothing in the ordinance shall relieve the tenant of liability for the unpaid rent nor restrict the landlord's ability to recover rent due. I'm happy to add in there, uh, the clause, nor alter any obligations or rights of landlords and tenants except as expressly set forth herein. And by adding that language, perhaps we make it even more clear that this only applies to financial impacts of COVID nineteen. And if you would like that, sir, I'm happy to add that.
Would you say that again, please? I'm a little thick.
So the first se- first sentence of section five would read, "Nothing in this ordinance shall relieve the tenant of liability for the unpaid rent, nor restrict the landlord's ability to cover rent due, nor alter any other obligations or rights of the landlord or tenant except as expressly set forth herein." The or- uh, the, uh, ordinance as a whole speaks only to financial impacts of COVID nineteen, so that language should clarify that no other rights are being dealt with.
Would it be possible to put in just cause language?
All right, we can, we can put in just cause, um-
I'm not sure what that, I'm not sure what that means. I'm not sure what that means. What is just cause? What do you, what do you, you can't just say just cause without defining it in some way. I'm not sure where, where that would actually fit in.
Well, where they vi- where they violate the, the, um, whatever agreement they have with the landlord, vis a vis the property, right, you know, having pets, any number of things like that.
Uh, okay, so section seven says that the ordinance applies to termination of tendencies for non-payment of rent arising from financial impacts related to COVID nineteen. I can add a single word and perhaps help by saying this ordinance applies only to terminations of tendencies for non-payment of rent arising from financial impacts of COVID nineteen. And that word only, again, would limit this to just that set of, of terminations.
Yeah, I'm thinking-
Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions?
I'll let it rest for a bit.
You get a time to comment, no problem. Okay, uh, Councilmember Mann, questions?
Yes, thank you. I just want to maybe make sure I understand this correctly. When i- in the, in the current draft ordinance before us, it says that the termination date is September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Now, I understand that as that's the time when the tenant has been six months from that date to make all the payments that they didn't make, uh, during this, um, moratorium. So, the, the ordinance of the moratorium, does it end on September thirtieth, or does it end six months from the thirtieth?
Right, so the, the repayment period is six months after the termination date. So protections are provided during that repayment period. The, the ordinance was originally written with a tentative end date of May thirty first. Uh, but then the ability for the ordinance to on its own terms keep going out for a longer period of time. Uh, and it was done so, uh, in, with the understanding that financial effects could last for a longer period of time than May thirty one. But the original idea was that after whatever the last date of the ordinance was, and it'll still be this way, whenever the ordinance ends, whatever that end date is, there will be six months to come back due on your rent, uh, or at that point, the, the landlord can begin proceedings.
So the, the ordinance technically ends, but then the provisions within it will still be in effect for six months.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, so, kind of going back to Mayor Pro Tem U's point about, I know it's going to be difficult to answer, but with this proposed date, let's hypothetically say we adopted this as, as it is, then it's highly likely that come September thirtieth, you know, the county's moratorium will still be in place. Then all of a sudden, there's this conflict about which payment, uh, repay, um, provision is technically in effect, right?
Correct.
One can argue that, well, now that the county's moratorium has taken over, you're expiring, I don't, technically don't have to be repaying my rent, starting from, from the day in, in Temple City's ordinance, right?
Someone could make the argument to a judge that, yes, Temple City's ordinance is expired. I'm now existing under the county's ordinance, and the county's ordinance will go until its own end date, and then give me twelve more months to repay. They could make that argument, and that would be something for a judge to deal with.
Okay, so it's really, uh, beyond what we as a local jurisdiction would- I mean, that, that's, that's up to the courts, basically, right?
Right, if, I, I think the best, uh, best advice I can give you is if you want to be certain that the six-month period is going to apply, uh, then we can circle back to the conversation that the mayor and I had a few minutes ago, and we would want to tie the end date of this ordinance to the end date of the county's ordinance. Then we would know that there was a six-month period for repayment. However, what we wouldn't know is, what we couldn't give landlords and tenants is any idea of when the six-month period might begin, because we don't know when the county is going to act, and, and I, I know one thing you wanted was as much local control as you could have, and so we've, we've tried to provide that for you.
And, and so for any city other than us who has adopted their own ordinance with a potentially different termination date on their moratorium, they're faced with the same conundrum as-
They, they are, and, and in fact, I, I can tell you, um, within the last month to six weeks, um, both Elmani and Arcadia, uh, decided to dissolve or rescind their moratoria and just let the counties govern them because, i- in part, they had concerns over this issue that we're talking about now. Um, San Gabriel and Monrovia, kind of both kept their own ordinance, uh, but have made some changes to make it a bit more like the counties, but they want to have the ability to, to stop it when they're ready. Uh, and both Rosemead and Alhambra continue to have their own ordinances, uh, with the six-month timeframe like you have, uh, but theirs are still, uh, still tied to the state health order date, uh, which, as I say, is currently July twenty eight, but we all expect that to, to be extended for quite some time.
Okay, and can you, from a memory, like, in terms of tying it to this, uh, the state order for stay-at-home, how, how does that impact or potentially impact our ordinance?
Sure, uh, it was, it was written to be tied to that, um, with, again, with the idea, uh, when we first took it from the county back in March, uh, the idea that, well, the state health order currently is set to end May thirty one, so that's when our protections will end, but, you know, they might go another month. They might go another two months. Obviously, with what we've all seen in the past, uh, two and a half, three weeks, uh, the state health order could go a very long time. Um, we can certainly leave your moratorium tied to the state health order. There's no problem in doing so. Um, but again, at our, our meeting in, in early June, uh, you had asked me to propose something to you that would be different. Um, and, and one of the reasons we wanted to be different was, uh, as I keep saying, we, you wanted to strike more of a balance, uh, not be necessarily as tenant-friendly, uh, and, and, you know, provide a bit more certainty if we could. As we're discussing, there may not be as much certainty as we would hope there would be, but we're trying to provide what we can.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Sir, you're muted still?
And you're on mute.
Have to pay attention more. All right. Okay, everybody's got to do that at least one time during the meeting, right? Okay, all right, so, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but another option would be for us to extend our moratorium prior to September thirtieth, correct?
Yes, sir. You can take any date you'd like.
I mean, if, if, let's, because this, this ordinance that's before us now is, will be enforced until September thirtieth, correct?
The ordinance, eh, the ordinance before you now is currently set to expire on July twenty eight.
Okay, I know, but, but the new, the new proposed ordinance.
Oh, what's, what's proposed for you, right, would, would expire on September thirty.
So, so I'm getting back to, uh, Councilmember Mann's questions and, and whether we want to tie in with the county and create, and then the other issues that we brought up, well, what happens if both of us expire, whatever? To avoid that, certainly, because to me, I, I think we want to stay as fluid as we possibly can, given all the changes that seem to occur overnight, almost every day, something different is happening. So none of us know. I wish we had a crystal ball that says, okay, on September thirtieth, you know, everything's going to be all great, death is coming, you know, we'll be able to deal everything. Well, we don't know that, um, but we could always, uh, extend or, or, or do what we want with that September thirtieth date. We don't have to necessarily tie it in to any specific other ordinance or, or pick a date. Um, we always have that freedom to do so, correct?
Of course.
Yeah.
The, the county right now, sir, is, is moving theirs forward, uh, essentially, once a month. Uh, they're taking it-
Yeah, and I, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing that either, but given the changing, uh, things that happen, but I think, you know, September thirtieth, obviously, is, we've got, that's two months away, so, you know, we- relook at it before then, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, a couple of questions, um, that concern me, and I know we discussed this last time, is that rather than put in any type of time period other than the fact that the renter has six months to begin, or six months to make the repayments, there is really no, we're, we're leaving that up to the landlord and the tenant to work out between the two of them, correct? There's nothing in our ordinance that says, um, once the moratorium is over, you have to start making, uh, you know, X fifty percent of your back rent payments, starting whenever. Okay, and the reason I bring that up is because in the building that I'm in, okay, they did exactly, they did the same thing from a private standpoint. They basically told the tenants, look, uh, we're, you don't have to pay your rent, we're going to reduce your rent, but you have until this date to repay it, and, uh, you know, or, or you, you'll, you know, have a penalty or whatever, so, so, I mean, is that something that, does the county have, have a, a time period, or are they, are these other cities, are they allowing the renters and the landlord just to work that out amongst themselves? Because my concern is that technically, under our ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, a tenant can basically, under the proposed ordinance, um, let's say it expires on September thirtieth, they don't have to pay their past due rent, and they have six months to pay that past due rent, which basically would give them a year without paying any rent, um. And then, so, and then let's say they vacate, and then, of course, the, the, the question, the, the, the alternative would be the landlord has to file a lawsuit for monetary damages and chase the tenant down, so that, that concerns me a little bit, uh, you know, um, seems to put a little bit more risk, I guess, on the landlord than it would be the tenant. Um, but the other question I had is, what is the impact, or maybe it's too soon to tell, certainly, the, the, the renters assistance program that we allowed, or we, we recommended of, of last month? Um, Mr. Cook, do we, are we, do we have any numbers on that yet as far as uh, where we are at? I know that's not on the agenda, but it kind of ties in with this subject matter, is that, you know, are renters out there taking advantage of it? And obviously, those, those monies are, we said, those have to be paid directly to the landlord.
Correct, and currently, we, what I would describe as oversubscribed, meaning we have more applications than we do, uh, funds available.
So our renters are taking advantage of it in Temple City, obviously, then.
My email was full of them.
Okay, okay. They're asking you for the money, Fernando, or what?
No, but, but they were popping up on my email.
Okay.
About my own tenants to worry about.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, um, let's see, any que- I have a lot of comments, but I'm, I'm trying to keep it to questions right now, um. I know, I know Greg and I have gone back and forth all day with a lot of different questions. I don't want to have to rehash those, and, and I think they've already been addressed pretty much in our discussion so far, um. Hmm, all right, well, I'm going to hold off on the questions right now until we get to comments. And so what I'll do now is I'm going to open up the public comment, uh, and I'm going to start by beginning, I'm going to begin by asking our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter.
Mayor, there are no public comment emails, but council did receive two, uh, emails with letters attached relating to this item.
Okay, uh, and I believe you have sent those to councils, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and those are the ones that we've received. Does any, everyone receive those letters, um? If you haven't, please say so.
One from Zhang Remax and Danal Perez from Apartment Association of Greater L.A.
Correct, yeah, we did be, we did receive those, those emails, okay. Um, okay, uh, so then I will then open up, uh, public comments for those who are on the line. Uh, those who are, are waiting, uh, on the line, uh, does anybody wish to comment on this matter? Hey, I'm looking caller number four, if you want to identify yourself, please. No? Okay. I'll ask again, does anybody wish to comment on this matter at this time? Okay, hearing none, I will, once again, close public comment. And now we are in a position for final council questions and/or comments, and why don't I go ahead and start again with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem U?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think what we have in front of us is a nice balance between, um, tenants' relief and, uh, and landlord's rights. In, in some sense, it's, um, it's not a good situation, uh, either way. But we're trying to make a bad situation a little bit more, uh, palatable to both sides. I, I think our ordinance is, um, is the right balance. I think the county's ordinance is perhaps a little bit too lenient to, um, um, pro-tenant- I think the county's ordinance is perhaps a little bit too lenient to, um, um, pro-tenant, if you will, cause, you know, the, a lot, the landlords, this is their source of income as well, um, so I think there has to be some kind of balance. Knowing that, um, uh, Mr. Murphy has said that we don't know when our, when the ordinance expires, whether or not one would argue, and I believe the tenant would definitely take the argument that, oh, the county's ordinance will apply. I think it's still worthwhile for us, I don't think there's any legal issues to adopt our ordinance, uh, more term the way it is, and, uh, we'll see how the courts play out. I think the good balance, rather than just giving in and don't do anything, and just, um, allow the county ordinance to take place.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Viscara, any final comments or questions?
Uh, Greg, would you mind going over the language that you had suggested?
Sure, love to. Um, so in addition to the changes we're already making, I would add, let's start with section seven, because that dealt with one of your concerns. Uh, section seven currently starts, "This ordinance applies to terminations of tenancies for non-payment of rent." I would add one word, "This ordinance applies only to terminations of tenancies for non-payment of rent arising from financial impacts related to COVID nineteen." Uh, that, I, I believe answers the concern that you raised there. Uh, the second thing I would add is in section five.
That, that's good, I can live with that.
You'll live with that, then we won't need to do the one in section five, and we'll be okay.
Well, at least according to Councilmember Viscara.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm a voice in the dark.
Any, any other, any other comments or questions, sir?
Not at this point.
Okay, great.
Although, I, I would just say, it, it does sound like, anyway you look at it, we're trapped by the county language.
Well, not necessarily, that's why we're doing this tonight. I think this'll allow us to, to basically, um, avoid that trap. Okay, Council, uh, Councilmember Mann, any final comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Chavez. So I, I stand by the previous opinion from our past meeting, that I think it's important for us to retain local control over the specific ordinance. Uh, I, I would not be in favor of rescinding, um, and allowing the county ordinance to take that place, uh, just because there is so many unknowns, um, this allows us, um, as, as I think Mayor Chavez mentioned before, to be as fluid as possible, because a month from now, we don't know what the situation is gonna be, we don't know how the county's gonna react, we don't know how the state's gonna react, and perhaps we might be back in a meeting discussing this in a very different context. Um, so I, I, I do appreciate the, um, changes, um, that were made, uh, by, by Mr. Murphy and staff. Uh, I think in its current form, it fully reflects a lot of the comments and concerns from our previous meeting, uh, and like Mayor Pro Tem U alluded, I believe this is a balance between, uh, various interests. Um, and I think it, it, it fits what we need for the city at this moment in time. Uh, and, but of course, uh, should things change, um, I'm obviously open to, um, us bringing this back for consideration, if that's necessary. Um, although I know we, we asked a lot of questions about the legal aspects of what takes place with orders expires and the county comes in, I do understand that, you know, we really can't answer that question right now, uh, but we shouldn't simply surrender our, uh, local control just because there is that unknown. Um, so, so I, I appreciate the, the ordinance in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my final concerns, okay, and, you know, I wrote down some notes, and I think most of them have been addressed this evening, so I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Murphy and my colleagues for, for bringing those things up, the questions and the comments, or I thought were well thought out. Uh, obviously, I think, uh, it's important, and we started with this, and I think, uh, Mr. Murphy alluded to this in his beginning comments, we wanted to be fair, as fair as we could to both sides. Um, whether that's an achievable goal or not, that, that's hard to predict. I guess it's from which side you are arguing sometimes, is which is most fair. Um, but obviously, as policymakers, that, that is always and should always, of course, be our goal when we have competing sides, and there's no question, in this situation, there are competing sides. We have landlords, of course, who rely on those rents for their income, for their way of making a living, for the most part, not always, but obviously, you know, they, they do, um, they have those rents for a reason. Of course, renters, uh, you know, they, because of everything that's going on, need some assistance, and we've been recognizing that all along, in a lot of the things that we've been doing. Um, another concern is that, and I think this is the attorney in me coming out, and that is, in any type of ordinance, agreement, whatever it is, whenever you get attorneys involved, the clearer you can make that document and avoid what we call vagueness, the better chance you have of implementing it and making sure it does what you say it's going to do. And I think that our agreement, our, our ordinance, for the most part, does address those issues, however, there are certain loopholes, I think, that, that not only tenants, but landlords could take advantage of, and, and I really, and this is something that, that Greg and I have discussed before, and that is adding a word or a phrase here and there to tweak this thing, so that we do get a little bit more clarity, and perhaps avoid the vagueness argument. I, I do like the fact that adding the word "only" to section seven will accomplish that to a great deal, I think that will certainly, uh, soothe the concerns that the landlords may have, and not that we're giving more rights to landlords at the expense of renters, but we're preserving what those rights are to both landlords and to renters at the same time. But also, I also like the idea that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Murphy, that in section five, and again, uh, this is something that we discussed as well, and that is adding some language that would make it clear that the landlords and the tenants as well are not giving up any other legal rights that they have currently under the law. This is a very specific ordinance and ordinance that, uh, addresses the non-payment of rent due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, and nothing else. And I think adding that type of language, and, and that's not unusual, I think, for these types of things, ordinances, agreements, whatever, the parties wanna make sure that, that the agreement stands on its, on its own, and that we're not giving up, either party is not giving up any rights that are not specifically addressed in this particular document. So I think that type of language added, added to section five, again, would, would, would be, uh, would be just something that would add clarity and avoid that, and, and be enforceable for both sides, and I think, uh, you know, that, that shouldn't give any heartburn, I don't think, to either side, so, um, you know, again, I addressed the length of the moratorium, uh, you know, the proposed moratorium is the end of September, I believe. Um, as, as Councilmember Mann mentioned earlier, uh, we don't know what the county's gonna do, I know Mayor Pro Tem U mentioned, look, we want, uh, you know, this, we wanna retain our own moratorium, I think we all agree on that, and, you know, if, if, if something happens between now and then, that, 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 uh, we need to address, we can do it. I mean, we can call a meeting, uh, you know, anytime we want to, to address those types of things, and, and I think we've shown that we're capable and willing to do that. Um, I believe that the, the renters assistance program that we have instituted will help the renters in Temple City, and truthfully, that's all we're concerned about, and should be concerned about, is the renters in Temple City. I'm not saying, I'm not concerned about others in our world, but, you know, we don't have any control over that, we only have over control over those things that happen in our city, and that renters assistant program, I think, will help landlords, hopefully, to recover some of those monies that they're missing out on now, if not now, sooner than rather than later, so, um, with those comments, uh, I will, I, I will conclude. Um, and so unless there's anyone that would like to, uh, present any further comments or questions, I guess we're in a position to entertain a motion on what we're gonna do regarding this matter. Uh, Mr. Murphy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, sir, it, I, I think the proper framing of the motion would be, uh, to adopt urgency ordinance number twenty dash ten forty-five U, with the changes to sections five and seven that have been read into the record, and to waive, uh, to read the full title and to waive further reading.
Okay, would anybody like to make that motion?
Does, does that, that include the, the tweaking Tom was talking about?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, I don't think we need a reading, do we, Greg?
It, it is an urgency ordinance, and it's a new ordinance, so I would like it just to be clear.
Okay, so if we could, if I could ask the city clerk to please, uh, read the title of the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. Urgency Ordinance Number Twenty Dash One Zero Four Five U, An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple City, Modifying the City's Temporary Prohibition on Evictions of Rent Residential and Commercial Tenant arising out of Financial Impacts of the COVID nineteen Pandemic.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, that will conclude our discussion on item number ten. We will now move on to item eleven, that is an update from our city manager, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Um, so, I'm announcing, and it's actually on our website, uh, for appointments to begin on July twentieth. Um, they will be limited appointments to provided the community. Um, you can either call six two six, two eight five, two one seven one, to speak with an operator, Monday through Friday, eight to five, or we actually have a website, uh, on our website is templecity.us backslash appointment. Now, they will be limited appointments, and the reason why they will be limited is to ensure a couple things with specific times and dates. One, to ensure that we provide a complete level of service to the community, so people don't feel like they're rushed. Two, we wanna ensure the safety of the public, the safety of the employees, to ensure social distancing, to ensure that also, too, occupancy loads and everything else are met, so that we are ensuring the safety of the public and the community, and, 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 and our employees, excuse me. But if we do not have a specific date that works for an individual, um, related to the, um, uh, appointments that are, are, are available, please call us at, at that number, at six two six, two eight five, two one seven one, and we will work with you to find a appointment and date that would work for you. Um, so we will require that face masks, face coverings be, uh, used while participating, we'll be having meetings behind plexiglass, um, and, and trying to conduct our business as much as we can, we'll ma- maintain physical, uh, physical distancing, social distancing at all times, cause we could have one to two to three people at a time, potentially at the counter, uh, but we're going to try to maintain that at all times. And also, too, just as a reminder, we have so, and kudos to staff for maintaining a level of services online and on the phone, so that, um, if you don't feel comfortable coming in, and this is for the folks who maybe have some complicated issues, that they wanna feel so they need to have a socially distant, face-to-face, safe meeting with us, me, or any other member of the staff that, that would be here. Um, the other thing that's exciting as well, and, uh, kudos to Mr. Remers on this as well, is not only can you decide to do in-person, come to city hall, uh, you can also do a virtual meeting through Microsoft's Teams, if you wish to do that as well, so do video conferencing with a staff member, so you can do that as well. Uh, so it is online right now. Um, and, uh, we will, uh, we're kinda beta testing it, so we ask for everybody's patience. Um, it's going to be a little tricky for some of the contractors that may come in, who are used to like a sequence of working with us, who they work with us first, kinda building a safety versus planning, planning versus building a safety, we'll get through those kinks together, um, and try to work those out, and as much as we can do online, and when we can come, and when somebody needs to come in, that's when we're gonna be available. Um, temperature check, uh, we'll ask you to do a health screening as well, not a HIPAA violation, not trying to issue, deal with privacy rights, but making sure that you are COVID symptom-free when you come in. On top of that, for members of the public who are coming into the building, and for our employees, we've taken some extra additional measures as well, including additional disinfecting of our HVAC system, um, uh, HEPA-like, not pure hospital-grade HEPA, filters in our HVAC system, cause our HVAC system is, is a little older, but actually, we're pretty breezy in the building, so it's actually having a decent exchange of fresh air to the building. We have all the requirements that are needed related to the health order in terms of health sanitizer and other things, all staff will be wearing masks, all staff go through health checks and temperature checks every time they enter, I came in and out of city hall twice today, went through that process twice myself. So, um, that's, uh, what's going on there, um, it'll be a work in progress, um, for the next few, for the next few months, and I can foresee this as going through the end of the year, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll work through it together. Uh, lastly, um, it was mentioned in your prior item, um, the, uh, the rental assistance program and the small business program have both been oversubscribed, in the sense of, we had more applications than we did, uh, available funds, and particular on the small business loan program, all of the tier one, uh, funding is going to be available for those who are, meet all those eligibility requirements, and we actually did the lottery system for tier two today as well, uh, so tier one is full, uh, and, uh, tier two, which is mostly the restaurants, then tier two, which is, was prescribed, so for fairness standpoint, did a random selection of, of numbers for those who would be eligible, we have that, we have a backup of those numbers as well, um, we have that on record, um, there were witnesses, I was one of the witnesses as well, along with other staff members, so if anybody has any questions, we're always happy to answer those, so those initial, uh, notifications will be going out, uh, within the next, uh, week and a half. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll now move on to item twelve, update from our city attorney.
Thanks, sir, uh, just, no real update tonight, my, my last two weeks have been mostly spent on the COVID, COVID matter, uh, helping the city manager on the CDBG, uh, rental and, and business assistance, um, working on employee issues. Uh, over the next two weeks, I will get, uh, some better legal developments for you all, and then, uh, based on our discussion tonight, uh, I'll come to you at the start of September with, uh, some thoughts on where the mor- moratorium is, where we are as, uh, as a, a city, and then what you, uh, you can give me direction at that time, uh, to whether you wanna re-agendize it for the second meeting in September or not, uh, and that'll keep that item moving for you. Uh, thank you all very much, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Great, thank you, that's it. Okay, um, we'll now move on to item number thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, uh, do we have any such reports? I don't think so. Okay, um, let's see, do we, are we up to date as far as, uh, our standing committees? We're still okay, uh, Mr. Murphy, and, and, uh, any of those, we have no issues regarding any of those, I don't think, at this time?
Nope.
Okay. Um, now, I know that, uh, the school, I had, uh, the school district, uh, standing committee, uh, obviously, uh, Councilmember Mann and I are the uh, standing committee, uh, obviously, uh, Councilmember Mann and I are the members there. Um, I believe that, uh, the staff is currently working on a, on a, a joint meeting, is that correct? Is any, any word on that, Mr. Cook?
Yeah, Ms. Flores is working on it. Uh, the school district has uh indicated that they would like to have a uh, full city council, full school board joint meeting. Uh, so we're going to try to schedule that in either late July or early August.
Okay, because we haven't, I haven't, at least I haven't gotten any requests for dates yet, is that, are we still? You're working on that still? Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Flores.
Ms. Flores, go ahead.
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that I am working with staff from the school board. I did uh send out three possible dates in accordance with your, all of your schedule.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, so, yeah, no problem. So once they confirm, I will add that to your calendars, hopefully by tomorrow evening from what I'm hearing from the school board.
All right, no rush, we're not going anywhere, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay, um, we will now move on to item number fourteen, council item separate from the city manager's agenda. Councilmember Viscara, anything that you would like to add to tonight's discussion?
No, I'm good. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just want to maybe circle back on a couple of things that uh was brought up in some previous meetings. Um, I, I, I know we talked about, uh, I, I don't know what the frequency for the sheriff's meeting. Uh, I know we had one not too long ago, maybe it was about a month ago, we had a virtual one. Um, I guess my question is, are we trying to do that on a monthly basis like we used to do? Or is that kind of up in the air because of, um, everything that's going on with the sheriff's department?
Uh, Councilmember Mann, uh, at this point, yeah, it's a little up in the air, to be quite frank. Uh, I think we've been, we were going to try, try to target every other month at this point, but it wasn't firm down, but that's, I think that's been the goal, is try to get every other month.
Okay, yeah, and I, I'm referring to the, the law enforcement meeting that we usually.
Yes, sir, yeah, and that, that one is every other month, yeah. That was kind of the goal.
Yeah, I, I, I've, I've always liked that meeting just because it's, it's a chance to um, hear directly from, from our dedicated deputies as well as our captain. Uh, I find it to be one of our more informative meetings. Um, and just having, you know, a record of it, allowing the public to participate, I think it's, it's important. So I, I would personally like to see that, uh, uh, back, back online. Um, and, and sort of a segue to that is, um, I would, I would like to see some progress on bringing Neighborhood Watch, uh, back up virtually, if, if that all possible, or at least maybe having some plan in place so that we know what the timetable is for bringing it back, um, or what format it, it, it will be in. Uh, I, I know there's, again, that has a lot to do with how we coordinate with our deputies, their availability at a timeframe, given the current situation. Um, but I think we, we have a lot of material that I, I would think that we would have a lot of flexibility in how we can execute that. We have a lot of, uh, stuff from previous meetings, we have recordings of previous meetings. Um, so, I, I, I don't want, I just don't want us to lose touch of that. I don't want residents to think that, you know, that's gone because of COVID nineteen. Um, that's always been a very popular, uh, community meeting for a lot of our residents. And, um, I, I got nothing else. Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really don't have a whole lot to add, but yeah, just to say that I want to thank, uh, Mrs. City Manager, staff, uh, Mr. City Attorney for doing what they're doing, uh, proactively. It, it's stressful time for all of us. Uh, what little we do to alleviate that is always welcome. And I just want to let, um, uh, Mr. Manager know, I just tested the appointment site, you know, it's right there. Um, so both, it works both on the iPhone and actually desktop. So, uh, I almost made an appointment to see, uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, on the fourteenth, but I actually did not go through it with it. It was very good because even give options of doing Emmet Microsoft Team Meeting. And even there is a, a, a question if you need Mandarin, um, translation, so I think I would need that, uh, Mr. Cook.
Well, we'll, we'll talk soon, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, um, just a couple of things. I concur with, uh, Councilmember Mann on the sheriff meetings. I think that's something that we need to get back into the habit of doing, um, uh, you know, if, if there's any, you know, you, I think if we, if we get used to not doing it, uh, that will become the norm, and I don't want that to happen. And so I think it's something we need to really be diligent on. The same thing for the Neighborhood Watch. Uh, you know, we set a standard initially with our Neighborhood Watch program, a standard that many other cities tried to replicate. I think it's now time that we do it again and set a standard that even with everything that's going on, we still, um, are concerned and we still want to educate the public on things that matter. Uh, I've noticed in our reports that there, there certainly crime has not stopped. Um, uh, it's slowed down quite a bit, but it has not stopped. And, you know, not only the crime aspects of the Neighborhood Watch, but also things that our staff, our, our code enforcement, our, our public safety officer added to the meetings, and that is what we can do. Maybe not now from a, a, um, you know, uh, something big happening, but basically what we can do to remind people of how to stay safe and, and, you know, wearing your mask and stressing all the things that we've been hearing. I think if people can hear that from us, rather than hearing it from the county or the state or the federal government, well, strike the federal government. But, uh, they will, uh, you know, pay attention. So, so, yeah, I think, I think we need to really, uh, hopefully, we can work on those, uh, sooner than later and get those things done. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
After William finished talking about, uh, about the meetings, is it possible to do a virtual meeting with a group that big, Neighborhood Watch type?
Certainly.
How do you do that?
It, it takes a little bit of management. Um, I, Mayor Chavez, and I, I know, I know councilmembers, like Councilmember Mann and Mayor Protem Yu participate in a lot of team meetings as well, so it's, it's definitely manageable, but you have to do, there's a lot behind the scenes you need to do to make it manageable.
You could get like forty people up from the city or sixty people and somehow.
Depending on the plat- platform, yes. Microsoft Teams can do quite a bit. Our, our own go, our own go-to meeting, I can't remember the exact number, but we can get, we can get quite a few people on.
Oh, okay, interesting.
I, I think we have done maybe up to three hundred some people in one, uh, Microsoft Team Meeting.
Really?
Yeah, I, I just attended the League of California Cities Conference, and there were hundreds of people on there, so. Yeah, it can be done. Just a matter of logistics. So.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we will now move on to item number fifteen, additional public comments. I will begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak now, or email requests, excuse me. Our city clerk still there?
I'm here, sorry, sir, I'm checking. No, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone who's on the line, if you'd like to speak at this time, that would be the time.
Yes, I would like to.
Go ahead, identify yourself, please. Yes.
Peggy Miller.
Yes, Ms. Miller.
Yes, yes, I would like to speak on what was brought up today regarding the sheriff's meeting and the Neighborhood Watch program. I, I personally don't feel that based on a lot of information that I'm getting from my neighbors and from different people in the area, and I'm sure it goes both ways, but I don't feel that the Neighborhood Watch meetings would be as effective as they have in the past because there's still some animosity that a lot of us feel towards our local sheriffs over experiences that have not been positive. So, um, that's just something to consider as, as a resident of Temple City. I personally don't feel like it would be based on Neighborhood Watch and security of our homes. I think it's going to turn into a dispute, um, but that's, that's again, my personal opinion because of the fact that a lot of this, um, poor feelings towards our local sheriffs is not resolved. In, in fact, it's not even close to being resolved yet. So, um, that, I just wanted to add that. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing that, I will close public comments. Uh, before adjourning to tonight's meeting, um, I just want to mention, I don't know that all of you are aware that, uh, our former mayor and councilmember Kathy Wilson, uh, passed away. I think it's been about a week ago. Um, I know she'd been battling, uh, cancer for a while. And so, um, I just want to make that known to everyone, uh, of course, um, you know, our wishes go out to, uh, her family, our prayers go out to her family and, and, uh, you know, I personally would like to say that, you know, certainly, uh, uh, Kathy, uh, was a big part of this city for a long time, involved in many programs. I know I first met her on the Little League field. Uh, I know she was very involved, of course, with our Blue Star Banner program. Um, you know, unfortunately, you know, uh, end-of-life decisions were not always, uh, the best and, uh, you know, but, uh, she left a, a good legacy, I think, of, uh, good things that she had done in the city, and I think, uh, certainly we can all recognize that. So, um, I just want to say rest in peace, and again, our prayers go out to her. Uh, I know that there is a service, uh, at Rose Hills on Thursday, I believe at ten o'clock. Uh, any of those who are interested in attending, um, may do so. Uh, I know there are some restrictions concerning the amount of people that can attend, but I'm sure you can get that information from Rose Hills. Uh, so with that, uh, I will now adjourn our meeting. Uh, thank you all for attending this evening. Great job, and, uh, stay safe out there and stay strong, and, uh, we'll see you all in a couple of weeks, if not sooner. Take care.